At this time, I need you to order.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here.
Please be advised that the loading requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied with the annual notice, which case efficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate voting board in City Hall, and has been translated to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, The Home News Tribune.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask you to join me in a moment of silence to honor Jane Tublin, who passed away on May 30th of this year. Jane worked for the city of New Brunswick from 1983 to 2020. And during her time, she helped create the New Brunswick Sister Cities Program, which allowed New Brunswick to establish relationships with cities in Japan, Hungary, and Oregon. Thanks to her Sister Cities Program, hundreds of schools' children and residents were introduced to people and cultures of Japan, Hungary, and Oregon. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Senator. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
We have a public hearing at this time for the city of New Brunswick 2023 budget. We have a public hearing on amendments to the city of New Brunswick 2023 budget. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Council President, this is the time fixed for the public hearing on the 2023 municipal budget amendment only. The budget amendment was approved by the governing body on June 6, 2023, was advertised as required by law on June 15, 2023, together with the notice of this hearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week, and a supply is here for anyone desiring a copy.
Thank you. Anyone who has no secure copy of the budget amendment may do so now. And now, I would ask the speaker to read the budget amendment.
R-062309, City of New Brunswick, Resolution to amend budget. By the municipal council, whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2023 was approved on the fifth day of April 2023, and whereas the public hearing on the budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend approved budget, now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of the 2023 be made. The current fund, from total general revenues, For, oh, you're still going up, sorry. For the total general appropriations, From the dedicated water utility budget, the total water utility revenues was $17,503,708.3, For the total water utility appropriations, For the dedicated sewer utility budget, the total sewer utility revenue was $16,470,260.50, The total sewer utility appropriations went from $16,000... I'm sorry. Be it further resolved that the certified copies of this resolution is to be filed in the office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for certification of the 2023 local municipal budget so amended. Be it further resolved that this complete amendment, in accordance with NJSA 40A:4-9, be published in The Home News Tribune in the issue of June 15, 2023, and that said publication contain a notice of the public hearing on the said amendment to be held at City Hall on June 21, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. It is hereby certified that all changes are approved, and the budget remains in balance.
Thank you. Before opening this hearing up, let me just outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will give please or her name an address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time. Address all questions to the chair. If necessary, then will be referred to individual members of the governing board or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget amendment before us. School or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. And now declare the public hearing on the 2023 municipal budget amendment. Anybody who wishes to address the council?
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Council. Charlie Cradaville, 143 Sedam Street. I just wanted to get an explanation of what has changed. It sounds like it's a million dollars or more less than it was when you first approved it. What's been cut and why? What prompted this?
Is the law writing?
Yeah, so the, there were different items, as you can see in the resolution, that were adjusted based on taking further cuts into the different expense on. So there's a couple items in both of ours. There's an item in health insurance, a pension as well. So, and then they've alternately adjusted the water and sewer utility.
Got it. So just your estimates have changed, or did some facts change, or needs change?
Yeah, we make estimates in the introduced budget and then get actual numbers if the air goes along, so.
Thank you, that's all.
Anybody else in the board?
Well, I'm sure that I already answered, thank you.
So there's no further applicants. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close?
Second. Hearing is now closed.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmembers Sekora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance for discussion of section.
What?
Did I miss something? Yes, I did, missed something again.
Yeah, it's okay.
Sorry.
Just have to.
I will now read section two, the adopted resolution for the 2023 municipal budget.
Thank you.
I offer the foregoing resolution and request a motion to move to its adoption.
Sure, the resolution.
One second, I need to read the section two, yes. Section two, upon adoption for the year 2023, Resolution R-062300C, be it resolved by the councilmembers of the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated in the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of, A) $38,137,282.91 for municipal purposes; and B) $1,292,945 for school purposes in type 1 school districts only, to be raised by taxation; D) $355,939.55 for open space, recreation, farmland, and historic preservation trust fund levy; for F) $1,333,681.13 for the minimum library tax. For number one, general revenues, surplus anticipated is $5,652,000. For miscellaneous revenues anticipated, $60,56,504.25. For number two, amount to be raised by taxation for municipal proposed item 6A and sheet 11, For item 6B, sheet 11, And the amount to be raised by taxation, minimum library tax, is $1,333,681.13. The total revenues is $106,472,413.29. It is hereby certified that within the budget, it is a true copy of the budget finally adopted by resolution of the governing body on the 21st day of June 2023. It is further certified that this item of revenue and appropriation is set forth in the same amount and by the same title as appeared in the 2023 approved budget and all amendments thereto, if any, which have been previously approved by the Director of Local Government Services, certified by me the 21st day of June 2023.
Thank you. Now, I offer the foregoing resolution and request a motion to move to adoption.
Move to adoption, motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, now the resolutions are adopted, thank you. Ordinance for discussion and second reading. We have ordinance 062301, and we're going to supplement the right general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title III, Verdenia Finance, Chapter 3.24, revolving relocation assistance fund. So before we go into this resolution, can I have Mr. Dominguez give a little summation of what is this?
No problem, Madam President. So, the city is looking to utilize this revolving relocation fund as a program to offset the costs of relocating persons when households are displaced from code enforcement activities. Now, generally speaking, the last few years, there haven't really been any. And typically, historically, we've used CDBG funds for that, as that's one of the permitted uses of, for CDBG funds, is relocation costs. We don't believe that it's the best use of the CDBG funds, and we can be using those for community improvements and infrastructure capital-type improvements. And we think that creating this fund and having it be a revolving fund that could be sustainable through the modifications made here will allow us to have enough money to cover any projected relocations and allow us to free up the CDBG funds for alternative uses.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Will you have the other council members have any questions or comments on this? Questions? We are preparing to open a public hearing on the ordinance only. You have up to five minutes, one per person, one time up. Any members of the public who wish to address the council and the district ordinance, please approach.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, Somerset Street. I don't think I'm really understanding a need for the change, the facts of what you're going to be using these funds for, for other purposes.
If I may. So, from time to time, when there's a code enforcement activity, sometimes a house or apartment needs to get shut down. And those persons need to be relocated temporarily until those conditions are abated, that they can safely move back into their dwelling. This is to create a fund that will be replenished, and it will be for money to pay for the costs incurred by the city to put those people up somewhere, and the costs of those persons while they're being relocated.
Mr. Dominguez, how will this be arranged? Who's going to?
It will vary, so.
Well, actually, I don't mean to cut you off, but okay, I heard my part. Now, let me just precisely say mine, due to where I'm not, especially due to where I know it's plenty of areas in New Brunswick, plenty of people who need helping hands of relocation. Now, my question is, is this a difference between Red Cross, or like I said, City? For example, I will say, okay, where people were just asking me to do a GoFundMe page for the people where they just lost all their stuff down at the fire on Ellen Street.
It's a different type of location. What we are talking here is relocation when there's a dwelling, right? And the tenants, they need to move out, because they have violations in that dwelling. Then, if it's not safe for the tenant to stay in that dwelling, that apartment, or whatever it is that, then they need to be moved out.
Well, I still see a lot of, I still see a lot of that in New Brunswick.
If you see a case of a major disaster, or the homeless, or anything, this is a specific or 20s and have been found to be a violation, they have some violations, and the tenants cannot retain that apartment. So that's what this is for.
Well, like I said, I still see that in New Brunswick a lot, too. So like I said, hopefully, we can keep the money for helping people and not other situations, because like I said, due to where I see people that need to get out, due to where, well, I just don't think the city is taking this the right way. But I say the money needs to be to help the people, and the fund shouldn't go to other situations.
Charlie Cradaville. I really do commend the city for putting together, you know, an attempt to address this issue. We know there's a lot of properties that are not complying with the code, and, yeah. The downside of enforcing it is it sometimes does displace people. I just wanted to clarify, though, sometimes a fire or a flood can be the cause of the violations, right? This would still, this would benefit people who are suffering from that kind of, you know, emergent situation, right?
Mr. Dominguez?
So the city's relocation program has been for when there are violations created by even landlord or tenant issues in properties. When there's a fire or similar issue, it's Red Cross that intervenes. This fund and/or the CDBG funds that we were having before that for purposes of extenuating circumstances, like a massive fire or something, that's a Red Cross intervention, and it's not the purpose of this program. This is, you know, health violations and other sorts of egregious property conditions, but not due to fire or something.
Okay, well, I do think that those things come up, too. And, you know, the government has a role to play in assisting those folks. I think that, you know, it's hard to sometimes decide where to draw the line of whether it's a, you know, a natural occurrence that nobody could have seen coming, or whether there was a situation there that is prone to flooding or prone to fire that perhaps the landlord could have, you know, abated prior. So I think it's worthwhile to consider including those folks. And I also, you know, do have to push back a little bit on section two. There's a talk here of prosecuting people. And I just want to clarify, this is, you know, you're trying to get folks to have to use their insurance policy, if they have renters insurance, before they apply for this pool of funds, which I totally understand. But it's kind of unclear on, you know, a person who may have attempted to use their rental insurance and gotten whatever they can get and still needs more assistance. It's unclear whether they're going to be prosecuted or not, at least my reading of it. It's also unclear what the penalties are. It just says the city will prosecute anyone. I think it might be better to have some discretion, and also to, you know, state clearly what the penalties are for a first violation, a second violation. Are we just assuming that the maximum ordinance violation penalty is what's going to be applied? And are we assuming that prosecutors will have no choice but to bring cases against someone who they believe falsely claims not to have a rental insurance policy?
Mr. Dominguez?
Prosecutors always have discretion of that anyway. We use boilerplate language that we saw in other towns. The idea of the language is to discourage anybody from taking advantage of the program in the bad sense of taking advantage, not in the beneficial sense. It's just to make sure that if they have rental insurance, they use that first. If there's a gap there, we can backfill it. But if they can cover it all, that is the primary source of covering their relocation costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, just the final question was, I wanted to ask, you know, approximately, you know, what the biggest sources of funding for this would be? Because I see a rather small five or $10 fee for certain types of vacancy applications that landlords might be making on the regular. And maybe Mr. Dominguez knows how many they tend to get for those. But I also see some other things like municipal liens or liquidation of any property. I'd be curious how big a chunk of funds the city tends to get from those sources and what you think the big source of this fund is going to be.
So, Mr. Dominguez, I was asking if you said why should any funding source of this amount?
Sure, so the five to $10 situation should probably generate, I want to say some quarter, in the order of $10,000 a year, maybe $15,000 a year. The lien component is because this enables the city, when there is a relocation, that is the landlord's fault, that we are able to put a lien on the property and recoup our costs on the property with up to an 18% interest rate. And those funds will then replenish, plus the interest we go into set account.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else who wishes to address the council ordinance?
The ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 062302, an ordinance to approve an offer of tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and Sterling's side, Urban Renewals, L.C. Any questions or any comments from my fellow councilmembers? Mr. Dominguez, can you give us a little bit of explanation of this one before we go into the public portion?
No problem, Madam President. About a little less than four years ago, the city had authorized a tax exemption for this project, 53 affordable units near the old Lord Sterling School, which is also an affordable complex now. The tax exemption that we granted was a 5 and 30, in the sense that it is a 30-year tax exemption, but they have five years to complete construction prior to the tax exemption taking effect. Due to COVID issues from high interest rates now, but before construction costs, they have not been able to get off the ground. They are hoping to put shovels in the ground this fall or this winter. But that five-year period would expire next September, which they would not be complete by. Without a tax exemption, this affordable project would not be able to get built. And so, we are seeking that the council essentially reauthorize verbatim what was approved back in 2019, except that it's in 2023, and we're restarting that five-year clause.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. At this time, if any of the people wishes to address the council, please come up. If you make an address, you have five minutes, one time up.
Okay, Charlie Cradaville, once again. I guess I'll start with the very beginning. Section one states that the project is within the city of New Brunswick Urban Enterprise Zone, is that correct?
Mr. Dominguez?
It's not in the urban enterprise zone as far as I know. I have to check a map, but I don't think it's in the urban enterprise zone.
Right, so a wise man once said, this is deja vu all over again. This exactly happened, you know, four years ago when this ordinance came forward, and I brought this up, and the decision was made to hold a special meeting of the council to make sure that it got through a different vote on a different date. So you may not need the special meeting this time, since I don't know of any time crunch specific to this, but I think it would be wise to hold off on approving it today because it has an incorrect material statement in the ordinance language. Would you be willing to do that?
Thank you, Mr. Chami, your counsel?
I know for sure if it's in the urban enterprise zone or not, but certainly, if you need to amend that, you can do that by resolution here this evening, and then just readvertise it on Saturday, the next week. Mr. Dominguez is.
I'm actually, I'm looking at the map right now to verify.
Why not defer until Mr. Dominguez is sure we can always amend it?
Absolutely.
It, it's not, it's just outside.
So it must be in the geographical area, but it's material in that regard, so we would entertain a motion to amend, but we'll hear from the gentleman as far as further comments. I want to cut into his five minutes.
Thank you for that. And, yeah, I think that's the right course of action here. I understand we need more affordable housing. I also think that, you know, these exemption agreements can hurt our school system because the city keeps almost all of the money, and the county gets a little piece, and the schools get nothing. So I made these points five years ago, you still passed it anyway. And I think that, you know, it would be wise to take a comprehensive analysis of all the, you know, 30-plus tax exemptions that this council has approved, and look at what you would be getting if you didn't approve them versus what you are getting under the payment in lieu of taxes. And I think that's in the user-friendly budget that you just approved. And when you look at it, it's pretty staggering when you look at the money that we're missing out on. I understand, maybe not every project would be able to move forward without it, and this might be one that's not. But we have to ask ourselves, are we preparing our schools for the next generation? And, you know, unfortunately, when we're giving tax exemptions to all the big projects, all the biggest money generating projects in the city, and cutting the schools out of the picture with these agreements, it's not serving our schools well, and I'm concerned about that. So I wanted to put that on the record, and also just ask that, you know, the applicant sent a representative. Do you know if they did today? Are they here? Okay, I know they did last time, five years ago, when they asked for this in the first place. And if we're trying to put pressure on developers to create affordable housing, you should have them here, and let's put some pressure on them, because it's been five years, and there's nothing to show for it. It's still a vacant piece of land. I understand there's mitigating circumstances and, you know, unpredictable things like the pandemic, but, you know, that doesn't mean a whole lot to somebody who doesn't have a home and needs it. We have a lot of seniors that are struggling to stay in New Brunswick, and, you know, projects like this could help them stay if they actually move forward on the timeline that the developers promised us. And if you remember back to that meeting, because I know you were there, they pressed you to have a special meeting because they said, we have a deadline to meet. We need to move quickly so we can get the, you know, get the HMFA tax credits to be able to do the project. So we need the tax exemption from you before we can get that, and we really want to have it. And they pressed you to hurry up and do it. And now they're pressing you to do it again because they didn't start the project, and now we're past five years. You don't have to approve this, right? They get 30 years of tax exempt if they do the project. If they take, you know, an extra year to do the project, then they're only going to get 29 years of tax exempt status, which isn't the end of the world. And if they take two extra years to do it, then they only get 28 years of tax exempt status. So I think it might be wise for the council to think twice about giving them a full additional, you know, 30-year tax exemption, which it comes with that five-year, you know, construction period. When they've let us down, they have to produce the housing they promised to produce, and the housing crisis has gotten worse. So please consider holding off on this whole thing.
Are there any motions to move?
Yeah, I submit, Madam Council President, Members of the Council, that.
I submit that I'm council president, members of council, that we propose a resolution to amend O-062302, section 1, subsection A, to delete the words "urban enterprise zone." That would be the resolution to amend.
Motion to amend.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Now, with respect to the ordinance as amended, we would need a motion to carry it and advertise for our next council meeting, which is July 5th.
Motion to carry to July 5th with a proper notice. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have ordinance of first ruling. We have ordinance 062303, an ordinance to amend and revise the ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 10, 2020, handicap parking, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons at 28 Chester Circle, Apartment 1B.
Move the ordinance sitting down July 5th, 2023, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 062304, an ordinance to authorize the granting of a right-of-way Eastman Agreement to 359 George Street, LLC, above and below the portion of the city right-of-way known as George Street Block 9, last night.
Can move the ordinance sitting down July 5th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m., same date to be advertised. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Then we have ordinance 062305, an amendment of one ordinance to amend ordinance 0641, 501, or regional appropriation and add an additional funds in the amount of $525,000.
I move the ordinance sitting down July 5th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m., same date to be advertised. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Now we have resolutions 1 to 48. Before we go into the public comments, any member of the council wishes to have a comment or any questions on the resolutions, 1 to 48. So at this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only. You have up to 50 minutes per person, one time up. Any member of the public wishes to speak on the resolutions, please approach the council at that time.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradville. Going to go to page 4 at the top. What do you mean by constituent professional services? What is this LLC going to provide?
The resolution number, you said?
Yeah, it's 062353.
Thank you. Mr. Ruiz?
Sure. The city is taking an opportunity to bring on a talented person who can help with constituent services, receive complaints, issues, things that we receive calls on. They can follow up on those issues, make sure they get to the necessary departments, make sure the departments can take action, provide feedback, close the loop and solve the issue.
Okay. And who is this person?
Anthony Camioni.
Anthony Camioni, the same fellow on the planning board?
Uh, he may be. I don't know.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And does he also have a city job? Does he work for the?
He is. Anthony, he's a firefighter, yes.
Okay. So he's going to essentially have a second city job doing constituent relations and he's doing it through an LLC. Can you tell me what, why was this arrangement made?
Mr. Ruiz?
Sure. So when Anthony had a matter which we had some time to see, he was able to work with constituents and we found that he had that talent, he had that interest. And this is an allowance by the law for us to be able to have talented people who work for the city otherwise come in and provide that service.
Okay. May I ask what the matter was that he proved himself?
There was a, there was a matter of civil service where he wasn't able to work in the firehouse. So at that time, we had the opportunity to move him out of that civil service. But the matter was pending and in that time, he worked in constituent services. The civil service matter was favorably adjudicated and we found a talented man to help.
Okay. So he's, and you're confident he can handle taking an additional job on top of what is surely a full-time job as a city firefighter?
Well, I think it'd be helpful to characterize that he has a schedule where he has time off that has other people do on a regular basis and he has a limited amount of time that he's working in his capacity.
Okay. And can you tell me what the amount of the contract is and the length, the term of it?
I think that's the resolution, isn't it? I think it's $17,400 and it's a 12-month range.
Okay. And is it fair to say that it's being done through a contract with an LLC? Because he would not otherwise be able to have a second city job?
I don't think it's fair to say at all. I think that the, I think he has an LLC and I think that's the purpose of that LLC and the statutes of laws and procurement laws allow us to do it and that's the way that we're doing it.
Okay. I'm just curious because this is, I think, fair to say it's an unusual arrangement for the city to bring on somebody to do constituent services through a contract rather than hiring an employee? Is that fair to say? I mean, are there any other cities that have someone doing this?
Mr. Cradville, the agenda is full of a number of proper arrangements through LLCs and through proper procurement, so I don't think it's unusual at all. But you're welcome to do whatever research you feel you need to do, but by the standard in which this is done, it's typical.
Yeah. No disrespect to Mr. Camioni. I've met him many times. It seems like he really cares about the city.
He does.
I'm just, you know, curious why the arrangement is this way and if there's any examples of other cities doing it. Because, you know, I certainly never seen this before.
He always takes the opportunity to read on the things that help his constituents.
Okay. I wish. Thank you. That's all.
Hi, yes, Daniel Morgan. I'm going to start off with number four due to where I know my buddy, great buddy, Mr. Ron Sanders, had told me that him and, I'm not sure whether Mr. Dominguez or Mr. Relently and the Board of Education was supposed to meet on this matter with the traffic signal to go on Jersey Avenue and Hill Street. Can you please tell me when this is going to get started?
Mr. Valenti, do you have a date of completion or any?
Where are you going to start the meeting?
This is an agreement specific to the resolutions during between us and the county. Should, of course, to have the traffic signal in place. I don't have a final schedule, so I know that all the materials have been ordered. I know all the submissions have been made and have been approved. They are going to start working in that area very shortly. One of the items on the agenda is for noise ordinance relaxation for the gas service. So we don't have final dates just as of yet, but they are working diligently to get it done as soon as possible.
So basically now the matters out of the Board of Education, this is with the city and the county due to where that's what kept saying from the county and the city that we cannot do nothing until the Board of Education says so. So this is out of the hands of the Board of Education and this is with the county now. Are we correct, Mr. Relently? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Actually, you can, I think, the county, the city and the county of...
Well, like I said, my point is that I would like to hear due to where, like I said, they both kept telling me until the Board of Education puts, sets something that they were not in charge of it. So like I said, are the county and the city in charge of doing this now? Or like I said? Yes. All right. Thank you. And so is that the connection due to where, like I said, I did see some work starting to be done over there yesterday? So I guess that's a connection with that one and 23 due to where all in that area that's going on for the school. Well, I hope to see it done. And then now my final question is for 31, where you're really going to block this road, the rule off from July 5th to July 16th totally for all amount of that time or certain time during the day?
The request for relaxation is for 24/7 for the entire time. However, in diligent means both with the New Brunswick Department, representation of the hospital, of all the contractor, we've come to terms and the hospital's happy with the plan. In some cases, once one of the congestion bridges up, one lane of traffic will be allowed to be flowing. They also may, depending on what the hospital requests, either open a lane during the night or during the day. So we have some flexibility to relate to that, but this covers the eventuality in the event that we need to close the road for the whole time.
Well, like I said, I, to me, normally I say your plans do not work out with closing roads due to where, and not thinking about the emergency flow due to where I will speak on and comment far as with George Street being closed and what, how, what your emergency vehicles weren't able to go through there, wow, did it cost somebody their life? And I'm surely thinking about with the hospital over here, with you keeping the road closed, all one-way streets, wow, you got to go for an ambulance to go all the way around because you have one-way streets. Wow, just three months, three minutes to do that, that can take away somebody's life. I hope you really start thinking about what, like I said, closing roads off. Think about one thing, but come on, everything has its side effects to it. I'm pretty sure you won't take, ooh, take a tablet for a stomach, for example. Ooh, something to cause your heart to go bad, cause you to go stroke? Come on, we got to look at it both, both ways. And do I see the city doing that? You council members doing that? No, I do not. Think about emergency. Thank you.
Anybody else on the resolutions?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes, with the exception of mine, where I'm staying.
Do you note it? Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Thank you. Before going to the public comment portion of the meeting, let me just go back and update some items that were brought up at the last meeting. There were some questions about staffing of things, you know, political, you know, wanting to know the staff, especially of DTW. So as of June 16th, 2023, the following aggregate information for the labor regulations of the City Department of Public Works. Street services, they have 16 full-time positions. Clean communities have three full-time positions. Garbage and trash, 24 full-time positions. Parks, 23 full-time positions. Shade tree, five full-time positions. All of these positions are staffed, so there's no vacancies. And there are some seasonal employees with limited employment engagement in support of the seasonal operations nutshell. In terms of city green initiatives, the city is in the midst of drafting a community energy plan with the assistance provided by a grant from the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. Once completed, the city will have a plan to strategically implement a city-owned electric vehicle program and the implementation of new green technology in the city. There also, some of the plan will also include recommendations for improving bicycle and pedestrian access. And this is in addition to ongoing green initiatives, including the city's education plan, offering renewable energy supply to residents in the city, several solar arrays placed on various quality-owned parking structure and the water treatment plan and the expansion of electric charging stations through our parking lot. This is in addition to other examples, small projects that have been done with working and seeking to grant electric school buses for the New Brunswick Court of Education, the implementation of the city first pollinator guarding in Brooklyn Park. In terms of, I see some Esperanza project residents here. In terms of the ordinance for the rent control, the only thing that I will tell you is that we have in our possession, councilmembers are right now, have an ordinance with some modifications. It's under review. Hopefully we'll have an answer soon to one of those type of like, okay? And so we're still working on it and we are reviewing it. We have it in our possession, so that's a good thing. So anybody from the council wishes to say something before we go into the public comment? I mean, none? Good afternoon. We are getting ready to start the public comment portion of the meeting. Just as a reminder, you have, please come up to the microphone, say your name and address. You have up to five minutes, one time up, to address the council. And I would ask you, as everybody is speaking, that we show respect and listen and... Okay, we're here. Public comment.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Veronica Nolasco. Somos miembros de la Asociación de Inquilinos de New Brunswick. Hoy, la asociación de inquilinos de New Brunswick, proyecto Esperanza, New Labor, y residentes de la comunidad estamos aquí una vez más para presentarles la petición para reducir o congelar el proyecto el porcentaje de incrementos de renta para el próximo año 2024. Como asociación, hemos estado recolectando firmas desde el mes de marzo de 2023. Y hasta la fecha se han colectado 1,289 firmas que apoyan esta petición.
Good afternoon. My name is Delmira Correiro. Yeah, I am a member of New Brunswick Tenon Association. Today, the New Brunswick Tenon Association and Esperanza Project, New Labor, and community residents are here again to present the petition to reduce or freeze the rent increase percentage for the next year, 2024. As an association, we have been collecting signatures since March 2023. And today have been collected 1,289 signatures to support the petition. So here, in this moment, we are giving you all of the signatures. And also, we are compiling this with a data report, with all of the information from this city regarding the numbers and information that required to that petition.
Con esta petición también acompañamos testimonios de cómo las familias de esta ciudad han sido impactadas por el incremento en el pago de la renta este año 2023. Estas familias están haciendo hasta lo posible para poder cubrir con el pago mensual de la renta. Pero en muchos casos han tenido que sacrificar algunos gastos de necesidad básica, como son los alimentos, medicamentos y educación para poder pagar la renta y tener un techo donde vivir. Y en algunos casos hemos visto que las familias prefieren mudarse a otras ciudades donde la renta sea más asequible y esto no es favorable para el desarrollo de nuestra ciudad.
With this petition, we are also accompanying testimonies of how the families of this city have been impacted to the increase of the rent payment this year, 2023. These families are doing the impossible to cover the monthly rent payment. But in many cases had been to sacrifice how many basic needs, such as food, medicine and education, to pay rent and have the roof to live. And in some cases, we have seen the families prefer to move to another cities where the rent is more affordable, which is not favorable to the development to our city.
Desafortunadamente, también se ha visto mucho desempleo. En este año, comparado con los últimos dos años anteriores, hemos escuchado que la agencia de empleo están descansando a gente. Esto pone en una situación muy vulnerable a nuestras familias que solo cuentan con un ingreso. Considerando esta realidad, les presentamos...
Considerando esta realidad, les presentamos esta petición para que trabajemos juntos para asegurarnos que las familias de nuestra comunidad tengan un techo donde vivir.
Unfortunately, there has been also a lot unemployment. This year compared to the last two years, we have heard that the employment agencies are arresting people or they are laying off to the employees. This puts our family with only one income in a very vulnerable situation, I'm sorry. Considering that reality, we present this request to you so that we are working together to ensure that the families of community have a roof to live from. Thank you.
I just want to say that, as I stated before, the council has proposed an ordinance with modification under review, the council members. So hopefully, we will have a resolution to this soon. Estoy dejándoles saber que, como dije anteriormente, el proceso tiene sus manos, ¿no? Los miembros ya tienen en sus manos una ordenanza, propuesta que nos estamos esperando y ver. Estamos ahora revisando, examinando las nociones individualmente para tomar una decisión y esperamos que pronto ya tengamos resolución a esta violanza del incremento de la renta.
Me gustaría compartir algunos datos que recalcan la importancia de bajar los aumentos de renta permitidos para proteger a los inquilinos de New Brunswick. Estas son cinco razones por las que el aumento permitido del 5.5% es demasiado alto.
I would like to share some data points that show the importance of reducing permitted rent increases to protect New Brunswick renters. These are five reasons why the 5.5% permitted increase is too much.
80% de los residentes de New Brunswick son inquilinos. Este es el segundo porcentaje más alto en el estado y uno de los más altos del país. Cuando toman decisiones para proteger a los inquilinos, están protegiendo a la mayoría de la comunidad que representan como concejales.
Eighty percent of New Brunswick residents are tenants. This is the second highest percentage in the state and one of the highest in the country. When you make decisions to protect tenants, you are protecting the majority of the community that you represent as council members.
42% de los inquilinos de New Brunswick gastan más de la mitad de sus ingresos en la vivienda. La diferencia entre un aumento de renta de 3% o del 5.5% no es nada pequeña para los inquilinos de New Brunswick. Para muchos podría ser la diferencia entre tener suficiente dinero para comprar comida, gasolina para llegar al trabajo, o pagar una factura médica inesperada.
Forty-two percent of New Brunswick tenants spend more than half of their income on housing. The difference between a rent increase of 3% or 5.5%, it's not a small for New Brunswick tenants. For many, it could be the difference between having enough money to buy food, gas to get to work, or paying an unexpected medical bill.
$1,917 es la renta mediana de un apartamento de dos cuartos en New Brunswick y Middlesex. La segunda más alta entre los fondados de New Jersey. Para las familias de bajos recursos es demasiado. Es por eso que tantas familias se ven obligadas a vivir juntas en apartamentos que no estaban construidos para tanta gente.
A thousand and seventeen is the median fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment in New Brunswick in Middlesex County. The second highest among New Jersey counties. For low-income families, it's too much. This is why many families are forced to crowd together in apartments that weren't meant for so many people.
$34.42 es el salario de vivienda en New Brunswick. ¿O cuánto debe ganar por hora un trabajador de tiempo completo para pagar un apartamento modesto? Incluso con el aumento del salario mínimo de New Jersey, podemos ver que dos trabajos de tiempo completo no son suficientes para pagar cómodamente los costos de vivienda.
Thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents is the housing wage in New Brunswick. Or how much a full-time worker has to earn hourly to afford a modest apartment. Even with the increase in New Jersey's minimum wage, we can see that two full-time jobs are not enough to comfortably afford housing.
Cero. Este es el número de propietarios en New Brunswick que han solicitado un recargo por dificultades financieras desde el principio de 2022. Si los propietarios realmente tuvieran dificultades para pagar sus gastos, tienen esta opción en la ordenanza de control de alquileres. La ciudad no debe dar prioridad a las ganancias para los propietarios sobre rentas razonables para los residentes de ingresos bajos y moderados de New Brunswick.
Zero. This is a number of landlords that have applied for a financial hardship surcharge since the beginning of 2022. If landlords really had trouble covering their expenses, they have this option in the rent control ordinance. The city should not prioritize guaranteeing a certain level of profit for landlords over reasonable rents for low and moderate income residents.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cristina Paredes.
Good afternoon. My name is Cristina Paredes.
Soy miembro del proyecto Esperanza, de la comunidad y de asociación de inquilinos.
I'm a member of the Esperanza New Grove Project, a resident of New Brunswick and member of the Tenant Association.
Nuestra petición es para que el municipio, nuestra ciudad, sea empática con la comunidad.
Our petition is for the council members to be more empathetic with the community.
Creemos que New Brunswick debería tener la ordenanza de control de renta más estricta del estado.
We believe New Brunswick should have the strongest rent control ordinance in the state.
Hemos trabajado con el consejo para aprobar varios cambios positivos para los derechos de los inquilinos.
We have worked with the council to institute several positive changes for tenant rights, but controlling rent increases is the next and most important step.
Pero el control de los aumentos de renta es el próximo paso y el más importante.
Yes.
A continuación, estamos en algunas de las comunidades de New Jersey con un aumento máximo permitido más bajos que New Brunswick.
So in continuation, these are some of the New Jersey communities with lower maximum permitted incomes than New Brunswick.
Bertha Boy, 3% o 2.5% si el inquilino paga el agua.
Perthamboy, 3% or 2.5% if the tenant pays for water.
Franklin Township, 3.5% o 3% si el inquilino paga la calefacción.
Franklin Township, 3.5% or 3% if the tenant pays for heat.
Elizabeth, 3%.
Elizabeth, 3%.
Nuaw, 4%, pero la ciudad también congeló la renta y no permitió el aumento durante la pandemia.
Nuaw, 4%, but the city also froze rents and allowed no increases during the pandemic.
Union City, 4% o 2% para personas mayores con ingresos bajos.
Union City, 4% or 2% for low-income seniors.
Jersey City, 4%.
Jersey City, 4%.
West Orange, 3% o 2% si el inquilino paga la calefacción.
West Orange, 3% or 2% if the tenant pays for heat.
Además, ninguna de las comunidades que se ajusta según las cifras de la inflación tiene aumentos tan mínimos garantizados como lo hace New Brunswick.
In addition, none of the communities that adjust for inflation rates have minimum guaranteed increases like New Brunswick does.
Sin embargo, en todas las comunidades, los propietarios continúan generando ingresos.
Yet, in all these communities, landlords continue to be able to generate revenue.
Los inquilinos de New Brunswick también merecen y necesitan un nivel de protección contra el aumento de renta.
New Brunswick tenants also deserve and need this level of protection from rent increases.
Antemano, como persona he visto que ustedes, miembros del consejo, han escuchado nuestras peticiones por la comunidad.
Ahead, you know, as a community member, I know that a lot of council members have worked with us and have listened to us previously.
Y espero que cada uno se tome un tiempo.
And I hope that each one of you.
Y considere que el aumento es un golpe duro para muchos de nuestros residentes en New Brunswick.
You take your time and consider that the rent increase is a hardship for a lot of the renters here in New Brunswick.
Thank you.
Hi, well, yeah, Danielle Moore, first thing I would say to her as a resident of 46 years, do I think these council members take the public, the community seriously? No, I do not at all, because all they think about is their buddies, their friends, money for their friends. Do they think about the public? And I'm speaking from my heart. No, they do not. But I would start changing the subject to, I would get back to the housing, talking about George Street. Come on, I told you it wasn't worth closing George Street. What, three out of 30 days? What, three to four businesses? Come on. I had talked to New Brunswick Police Department and the owner of Everyday Earthshock. What is the situation now? People are complaining, come on, I'm not gonna be dining. And people standing there smoking marijuana. It wasn't my question. You've seen, you're all on Facebook. You've seen someone posted that over the past two days about smoking marijuana and no outdoor eating. That's gonna be a big situation. But my point was, wow. And like I said, May 21st, the day you closed it, luckily, New Brunswick Fire Department, where you had a fire on the corner of George Street and New Street, in a luxury building, while the engine coming from over towards Lincoln School had to go all the way around. Luckily, the fire was under control. While May 22nd, prayers that it didn't cost somebody their life right behind there in a senior citizen building, where the ambulance had to go all the way around. When you see three ambulances there for 30 minutes. Wow, come on. I told you it wasn't worth closing George Street. Well, especially what workers closed. Was it worth it? What, now the rest of the week it's gonna rain? You did, what, did you listen? Do you listen? When I say I see something, it's not where I'm wishing something. And I will tell you, to a show, I won't be here for two months because what I'm seeing is, wow, I have to focus on my son, stopping my sister's son. When I say I see something, that's not what I'm wishing for. But when I see things, do you take anything seriously? No, no, I do not. No, you do not take anything seriously. And I will speak on half of them, to where, what? I told you, what, all these apartments, to where, yes. Say you can afford $615. What, it would take you to get $72,000 in income just to get the place? Wow, now at the art center, to where, wow, your buddy's not making too much money now? What, he's accepting government in there, to where, what? It's too much, to where, like I said, what, the income. Now the same situation you're gonna have with townhouses over there on Sears, to where, come on. Just for $1650, a two-bedroom, you have to make $72,000? Like I said, sure, I understand what they're saying, to where, I said, ooh, I have free time now, but wow, now it's just me in the apartment by myself. It's a big difference from going $680 to $2,000 by myself, to where, like I said, what, I wasn't expecting no $300 PSENGD bill every month, the only person in the house. But wow, I will say, thank you, Jesus, the Lord bless me every time. What were you trying to make me out of, a bad person? What, the Lord blesses me, asks me, what, did I get help? Yes, I did. And like I said, one last thing I will say to you, Miss Susanna, please. You can keep trying to say whatever you want, to the police department to get me arrested. I don't care what you think. I told you, long as a man above, know what I'm doing? Please, keep on, keep on trying to make me look bad. Because I tell you, thank you, Jesus, all I do is keep getting blessed every time. No one's hurting me, because all I'm doing is speaking the truth, what the Lord touched me to do. And like I said, wow, you ought to start thinking about other people. Wow, because, wow, you've got money, but you fall down. You're gonna need a helping hand someday, and remember that. Money does not save you in every way. But like I said, is it a hustle going around? Yes, it is. To where, what, a lot of businesses, what grocery stores, everything self-checkout now? What, all the landscaping business, what, no grass cutting because of the heat last year? What, no snow, no making money? Yes, come on, think about it. What, PSENGD jack the prices up? Come on, the cost of living, the food? I will tell you, yes, I did have hard times. But one thing, I was born and raised, if I didn't eat what was put on my plate, then I would go to bed hungry. I survived, but like I said, yes, it is getting pretty hard to take care of yourself. But wow, do I believe that the city is really gonna help you people? No, I do not. And like I said, sad to say, how long have you been coming down here to keep protesting that they lower it? Please.
Yes, please, Charlie Cradaville, once again. I'll start by saying I stand with the residents who spoke today, and I'm very grateful for their research. I learned a few things today and it, you know, strengthens the argument for a 0% increase next year. And I think you'll probably see my name on that petition. And I hope you'll heed those words. Can you tell us the ordinance that you're considering? Does it have a 0% increase next year?
As I said before, I am a member of the council who just, I'm reviewing it.
Okay, that's totally fair. And I hope you'll consider a 0% increase next year, given the fact that residents this year were slammed with a 5.5% maximum increase. That is really, should have been stopped before it was allowed. And now we've got to make up for it. And I think a 0% next year would make sense. Can anybody tell me what happened with the Pride event that was scheduled for the past weekend? Is it true the authorities?
Was it just staged? Did you organize that, or did you just happen?
No, I don't believe, I did.
So was anyone aware of that event?
Yeah, is it true the authorities shut it down or canceled it?
Sure, sure. Well, which event specifically you're talking about, Scrabble? There's a lot of Pride events around in June.
Yeah, was there one that was canceled by the authorities? Or do you know what I'm talking about?
There was an event that the application was not completed. You didn't have the necessary information for the event to carry forward, so the event could not continue.
Okay, so can you tell me what information was missing? And, you know, why that wasn't worked out before the day they got? Because I understand people showed up and they were told they had to shut it down.
I don't think the applicants would want their business, their matter discussed publicly. We want to talk to them about it.
It was on the council agenda, was it not? Okay, so I want to know what happened.
I was asking you, he does explain to me that there was some case on the document that he wasn't clear.
And I asked which things?
So it says, he answered, who he said is also a resident. He asked whether they have the questions about contact and abuse of his family, the information, which I know that they would have.
That they probably already have? I don't know what they have. I'm asking because I want the information. I want to know what happened. Something missing from the application. Why wasn't that communicated in advance? Why did you end up in a situation where an event was taking place and it was shut down by the authorities?
You're assuming, that's why I said that maybe you should communicate with the person or persons responsible that need that information. You just told me that it's not fair to have all that information given out when you're not responding to the ordinance.
But it is, because it's a public event in a public park and public resources were used to shut it down. Who shut it down? Can you tell me who shut it down?
Just told you.
No, you didn't. Who was it? Was it the city? Was it the county? The police? There was some what, I'm sorry?
Missing documentation, you just told me.
Right, so who shut the event down?
Council President, I would encourage Mr. Cradaville to speak to the other.
I will, I will. I'm just asking questions. I need to know about the unfortunate murder of Markell Williams in the Second Ward, Troop and Delavan, June 4th. Has that been solved? Is the killer still on the loose?
I'm saving the petitions.
Okay, good. Does the police have a representative here today that might be able to address whether this homicide is? Okay, so you will share that information two weeks from today? So we have to wait two weeks to know if there's a murder on the loose?
Like I said, if you have that information, if you have that information before the Pride politics, we don't talk to you, that's how we do it.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm concerned about the police lack of transparency. I don't see the director here. That's normal, because you've said. I don't see the director here. That's normal, because you essentially given him a pass and said he doesn't have to come here. Meanwhile, we've got people being gunned down in the streets, and we have people feeling unsafe even in their homes. I just, I don't understand why the police are the only ones that don't have to answer questions here. Is there a reason that you can't refer my question about the homicide to the police lieutenant in the back row? So, no reason, okay. What's going on with... May I ask how much time I have left, Madam Clerk?
Six seconds.
Six seconds, okay. The City Council has decided to censor the video of the May 3 meeting because you're trying to cover up that Tony Caputo lives at Cape May. Thank you.
Oh, I have a comment.
Hello, my name is April Niglous, 14th and Sedam Street. I wanna emphasize and elevate the previous comments that other speakers have made about the need for addressing the housing crisis in our city. It's really a growing problem, and many people have spoken at many previous council meetings about that. And certainly, a stronger rent control ordinance is the biggest and most obvious first step at addressing that housing crisis. So I'm excited to hopefully soon see action by the council on that. And I also hope that the council wants to stop there, because we need more than just that one solution to actually tackle this crisis. We need also more support going towards services for homeless population. We also need more resources going towards supporting and educating tenants, because many tenants aren't aware of the existing protections provided by the Court Rent Control Ordinance, and hopefully the increased protections provided by whatever amended ordinance might exist. I know people personally who have faced rent increases on their rent-controlled units that were beyond the legal amount, but they did not know that at the time, because they weren't educated on all the intricacies of rent control, where to find that information. And so, more efforts by the city to put out information for people so that they can take advantage of the protections and arm themselves with the facts and fight back against any under practices. I think would be another important step for addressing those problems. And then, a separate topic. You mentioned draft planning for climate action in coordination with the Board of Public Utilities. Did I hear that correctly? Great, wonderful. It's a little loud, so I wanted to make sure that I heard properly. And did you mention, is there a timeline for that?
There is. The whole process, as it was given to us, is a two-year process, and we are at least six months into it. So there's check-in points, there's more analysis. So I'm hoping to move quicker than two years.
Great, yes, wonderful. And do you know if there's any active coordination with Rutgers in that process? In that planning process for climate action in the council?
So the grant provides for technical assistance through the BPU. So any partners that would come in, they may bring Rutgers in. I don't know specifically.
Okay, well, I'm certainly very aware that Rutgers spent a lot of time and resources in past years developing a pretty comprehensive climate action plan that covered a broad swath of climate sustainability issues and certain things that were part of that plan. Things like bike lanes or resiliency planning are things that would only be able to be implemented in coordination with the city. And so, if they are not yet involved in whatever process the city is undergoing for climate action planning, I think that would be a great idea, because they've done a lot of heavy lifting already on the background for what would need to happen. And I think that everything would be more successful with more people working together on this. Thank you.
Good evening, all kind listener. I come to you tonight to say that I am really pleased with the services that are provided to the citizens and constituents of New Brunswick by not only the Department of Public Works, but by the fire and police departments, and by the rest of the municipal employees in this city that by and large are responsive when you approach them in a way that's thought out and has some relevance to day-to-day operations of the city. So I appreciate that, and I hope that you pass that message along to them. I also come to you tonight to talk about, just for a minute, the ill-conceived closure of George Street and the manner in which it's being carried out. It broke my heart to hear that the resolution and the specifics regarding it were provided to the council at the last minute, were largely glanced over, were probably not understood, and are certainly not being enforced in any way whatsoever. The people that have, and the businesses that have decided to trespass on George Street and on their neighbors' frontage are doing so in violation of every single component of that resolution that this council passed. They're in violation of the American with Disabilities Act many times over, whether it has to do with ramps and access, with seating, table heights, spaces between tables. The picnic tables that are in the street are an absolute non-ADA furniture component for a place that serves food and need to be removed. Every single item, aside from the ADA, that the city put into the resolution, whether it's the height of the barriers, what they're composed of, how they're placed, what signage is on them, whether they have flowers attached to them, are all being violated blatantly. The fat cactus is a neon abomination to anybody that comes to this city with their metal pedestrian or traffic barriers covered in that stretch material, which is not called for in the ordinance. The social room has decided to deposit about 50 pallets painted black and strewn about the street. Quite frankly, it looks like a garbage dump. Maybe Brittany will come up here and speak about how the department can come and collect them. I was gonna say it looks like a shitstorm, but I don't want you to cite me, but then I'd have to just cite you back. The Tavern on George has signs on their barriers that are other than City Market. The Tavern on George also does not have the opening to the space they use directly across from their entrance, which is also called for by your resolution. The fact that no one's using that space in any meaningful way is beside the point. It looks like nobody gave it a second thought, and nobody really cares about how our downtown looks. There was something else I wanted to say about that, that closure. Just give me a minute. Everyone's in violation of the space that they're allowed to use. The resolutional ordinance, whichever, I'm sorry, calls for them to be basically trespassers on their neighbors' spaces. It allows them to use unused adjacent spaces. Tavern on George and the other one, Harvest Moon, down the road, they're in violation by crossing the center line of the street and using not adjacent, but opposite areas to their places of business. And they should be restricted to what you guys, unfortunately, unthoughtfully, put in place. The fact, and I'll close with, and this really bothered me about this resolution, is that the last line in it says, "We'll change this as we see fit." And to me, that's just an unconscionable entitlement for the council to put into place. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up to speak the truth. Thank you. God bless you.
Brittany Livingston Avenue, thank you for that, because, you know, these guys don't really see how... They see them as complaints, but we're not trying to cause trouble and make complaints. It's just harder for us to serve the city, and, you know, we don't wanna be in the way of the police or the ambulance. You know, it's nice to see that they're able to eat outside and stuff. That's not what we're saying, but it doesn't really serve us and the people that work for the city. They're trying to get through. The garbage truck is pretty much blocking up everything. We can't really move to the side, you know what I mean? You have to track their trailers sometimes when they have events going on with the state theater, some of their charter buses. You guys allow them to park there all night. The truck drivers piss in bottles, and they put them outside of their trucks. They throw garbage, but, you know, we're not being thought of. We're not considered respected in this city, because like in our union meetings, we're told police and firemen are more important than us. But we do just as much hazard work as they do. When you guys are allowing the city people to go downtown and eat, they throw the garbage all over the place. We see some of the parking authority who try to help us keep it clean, which we appreciate. But, you know, you can't keep an eye on people 24/7. That makes the job even worse. The businesses are now taking their garbage that they can't fit in a city marked can, and they're just putting it in a city can. So, you know, you have the supervisors, Tom Valenti, whoever else is behind the scenes giving us orders to go back out and pick up city cans multiple times a day, because it's just a bunch of illegal dumping. But you're saying we don't deserve a raise? You're saying we shouldn't be coming up trying to figure out what's going on with the contract? It's just more and more work, not because of something that you guys are putting on us, it's just because there's nothing being done in the city. There's nothing being done. It's just heavy garbage. Do you know that the tippers on the back of that garbage truck is supposed to help us lift heavy cans? The tippers are breaking. I have a brand-new truck. The tipper is broken, because the cans are so filled with liquids and garbage from downtown. You guys service downtown six days a week. You used to do it seven days, but because you didn't wanna pay the time and a half for Sunday, you took away Sunday, and now, and you had these guys doing this for years, working on Sunday without time and a half, which I think was pretty much robbery. You took away the Sunday, you're servicing downtown and city cans six days a week. You only give them four hours for working on a Saturday when no city cans... You're adding more city cans and triple stations, which turns one can into three, and you're still only allowing them four hours to try to clean up all the city cans in the city. It's insane. And then you wonder why you can't keep people there. Then when they call out, because their bodies are hurting, or they're tired, or they're sick... These guys are working in the rain. These guys are working in the heat. You don't understand how much it takes to do that. Let's talk about when Mr. Cradaville brought up, with the shooting on Troopin Delavan. Do you not hear how all these shootings and killings are going on while we're working? We're out there when that stuff is going on. Maybe not every time there's a shooting, but early in the morning, we're preparing to go to work, or we're just pulling out of the yard, and somebody could have just got killed there. We gotta wait till they clean the body up to go pick up the garbage, because heaven knows what happens when we leave the garbage there. You know what I mean? There's no protection. People can just drive around the garbage truck with no respect, hit the people, hit the workers. There's no protection here. The contract is still open. Nobody knows what's going on. They're trying to figure out, do we deserve money out of the budget to get an increase? I'm pretty sure a few years ago, you guys gave yourselves an increase because of whatever... You didn't have office supplies or something like... Who cares? We're doing 10 times as much work as you guys are doing, but I guess you figure, you know, we're just black people and we don't deserve to be paid more. You know, we're out here working hard, not just for ourselves, but for you too, the ones that live in New Brunswick too. Heaven forbid if we pass your can, oh, man. Then, I guess that's another 10-day suspension, but if a police officer could come to work drunk or be off-duty drunk and crash into a few things, oh, we'll just give them eight days. But because Brittany likes to run her mouth, let's give her 10 days. But 13 people called out, but only three of us are up for suspension. Me 10 days, one person one day, one person two days. If that's not racism and discrimination right in your face, I don't know what is. But let me guess, you're gonna hire an investigator, and they're gonna see that there's nothing going on with the city. Crooked, crooked, crooked. I don't understand how you guys can take people coming down here every other Wednesday, complaining to you about the same thing, and you do nothing about it.
Yes, I think that issue, I've spoken about it several times. The lack of respect goes back to not giving a COVID bonus. When the central school workers were out there, if that's not frontline work, I don't know what is. Getting sent to the hospital to pick up hospital waste without the proper protection, and before we even knew really what this virus was, and the people that are supposed to pick up the hospital waste refused to come.
Exactly.
And who went?
We went.
Thank you. And thank you for that, and thank you for all the hard work you do. And it just, it really does not seem fair at all. To just have more work poured on and refusing to settle a contract and give a decent wage. And if there's still COVID money, they should still get that too, because that's what the COVID money was for. And if you don't treat people right and respect them, yeah, you can't get more people to work. You know, you have to be competitive wage-wise, which is also the COVID money is allowed to be used for. The same thing with the parks and the shade trees, not having an arborist. Well, if you're the Department of Parks and Shade Trees, you can't afford to be down an arborist. And those trees are still laying out there, waiting to die with their little balls of dirt. I know I brought that up a few months ago. I mean, apparently, they don't have enough of the full-time, regular people working. They don't plant all the gardens they used to plant. I mean, don't get me wrong, the ones that are planted are beautiful with the little flowers and everything, but they're not doing all the things that they used to do. So if they have the actual staff they used to have, I think those things would be done. But also, before my time runs out, I wanted to get to the point of, whatever we do in favor of the environment, it's kinda like the state had an environmental plan, but now they wanna, you know, they may, they haven't committed to not approving another power plant in Middlesex County, where we already have six. We're the most densely-powered plant-populated area in New Jersey. And I know you said it's not your business to support the resolution against it, that our own environmental commission recommended that they supported it. But that is how these things get stopped. In North Jersey, they stopped one by getting like 30, 40 municipalities to sign on and say, "Nope, we don't want it. We have to breathe this air too." It's not just the individual location, who, by the way, get paid to have it there. It's everybody's business, because everybody has to breathe the air. So it's like working across purposes to their supposed plan that the governor had ran his campaign on to approve that. And the same way here, if we have an environmental plan, but then we turn around and spend $77,000 on a new SUV for the police department, and it specifies gasoline engine. If we're spending $77,000, we could get, at a minimum, a hybrid. Come on. We're working across purposes here. We can't say we're all about the climate, and then be still buying brand-new, top-of-the-line, super-expensive gasoline-powered vehicles. That just, that does not make sense. I also had a question about the grant that came, the ordinance under that. I'm sorry I didn't get here in time to ask specifically about the ordinances. But the one that's for the 2023 cops office hiring program? I think that's separate from the one from last time, where they were hiring the office... What is, is that hiring for the office of the police? Of office worker?
Council President, I believe that's a typo. That's the same grant that we applied for. The federal cops hiring grant for police officers.
Oh, for officers, not for office personnel? It says office.
Yeah, and I saw it.
I was wondering. Yeah. So whatever...
Six, six and two.
Yeah, and as it said last time, it would just be like the regular training, just because it's coming from Police Community Grant Program. It won't be any different, but community-oriented policing services. I would really like this...
I would really like to see our police out in the community like before, like they used to do walking with, and they were doing it one time with a Rutgers officer and a Brooklyn officer and getting out there.
Please do, do so out. They have a label of police team. They could be around in the community. Please agree. At this time, since there's no more comments, I would like to take motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gassett?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, thank you.